Thank you. All right, I'll call this meeting of the Durham Board of Selectment on August 23rd, 2022 to order. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number two on the agenda was the issue of the oath of office for our new town manager, Jerry Douglas. That actually happened earlier today while the town clerk was here, because she's legally the one that does the oath. So he has already been sworn in and officially welcomed.
Welcome.
All right. Other amendments to the agenda? I have a couple. On number eight, under new business, the first two items about supplements and abatements, that needs to actually be pulled out as a separate agenda item. We'll make it seven A. Whenever we have things like this, we have to formally go into an assessor's session and then when we're done with that business, come out of assessor's session and go back as a selectman. Because in this form of government, we are actually the assessors. Donna Hayes is our assessor's agent who actually does the work, but we actually have the legal authority, which is why we have to go in and out of assessor's session. And then under new business, I want to add a third item to talk about vacancies that we have on some town committees and boards and steps to solicit volunteers that might want to be appointed to fill those until our next election. All right. Any other amendments to the agenda? Okay. All right. Third item on the agenda, use of ARPA fund public input. And I'll apologize if that title's a little bit misleading to people. We're not actually soliciting public input tonight about specific proposals or projects. Tonight, what we're going to talk about is the process for doing that. You know, like what is that going to look like so that anybody that has an interest or any group that has an interest will have an avenue to make that interest known? You know, what do you want the money for? What would you do with it? How does it benefit the town, you know, and so on? And so that's what we're going to talk about a little bit about tonight under number three. So I think we all have, the board members should all have, and I believe this is online already, correct? The letter about the use of ARPA funding, has that already been put on the website?
I will check. I'm not sure. I had asked to have it on.
Okay, but if not, if it's not, it's going up like anytime now, like tomorrow or whatever. So basically, there's a letter going up which briefly explains, you know, what ARPA is, what generally the requirements are, you know, at a pretty high level, similar to the fact sheet we had at the special town meeting last week. And then it talks about next steps in like, for instance, the way this is drafted, you know, in August and September, yeah, the board would discuss developing some sort of request for funding process and like what that might look like. And we'll talk a little bit about tonight about, you know, we'll review a sample application that Jerry found and then that'll give us kind of a starting point to work on. So maybe in, you know, August, September, we're working on that. September, October, who knows, we might conduct some surveys or we'll open up special sections of our regular meetings, I think, and invite people in to come in with their ideas and priorities that they have for that money. Keep going through that process in November, December. At some point, that'd be kind of like an application deadline. And then ultimately, it's the board's responsibility to determine, you know, after hearing all the public input and receiving and evaluating proposals, you know, it's up to us to decide what are we going to put before voters for approval? Because just like the last special town meeting, any, the use of ARPA funds has to be approved at town meeting. So that's kind of generally what we're looking at. Does everybody have, did you guys get your copies of this? Jerry, did you want to take us through this a little bit on what you were, what you found and what you were thinking?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spent some time today looking at different applications that are out there as far as grant applications, specifically offer grant. And what I found was that a lot of the grant applications were actually coming from the county. The municipality was actually filling out a lot of these applications, but they can be, you know, edited for nonprofits or whomever to request money from the municipality. There are applications out there that are very complicated and there are some that are very short and sweet and easy to understand. I actually printed off one that I thought was, was one of the easier ones to give to the selectmen to kind of look at, to see, get a feel for what they would like to see as far as the grant application. And that's what they have before them. And there are, there are a bunch of them. And again, mostly I want to say that they're actually coming from counties and municipalities and nonprofits were asking money from, through the grant, through the application to the county. So it would be just the opposite for us, not the opposite, but it'd be just a little different, where the nonprofits would be asking money from the town of Durham.
Yeah, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a nonprofit. It could be.
Yeah, it could, right.
You know, I think one of the things we talked with, when we were chatting in the office beforehand, like for instance, would we have, for instance, if the fire chief has a specific request, would they use the same form?
Town, Public Works, Fire would use the same application for the same monies, absolutely.
I like, I like the section here where cite the specific language in the American Rescue Plan Act that supports your request for funds. Because that's a really complicated law and the overview is like 47 pages long. So imagine how long the actual law is. But I, I think that's the gist of it, what I think anyway is what, and that might, maybe, I don't know, maybe that comes later, but it's like, what do you want the money for? Explain it in detail. How does it benefit the town? And how do you feel it qualifies for ARPA funds? You know, those kind of, kind of three general buckets there, I don't know what you guys. And we're not, we don't, we're not voting or just finalizing anything today. We just want to maybe give a little direction to Jerry. And I think Mitch is going to help him out with this to kind of go to the next step and start putting together, you know, an actual draft application and process for us, so.
I didn't see this in the email packet.
Yeah, well, we didn't have any of this in the email packet.
Well, that's, that's kind of hard to discuss something and just see it for 30 seconds.
Yep, and we can absolutely table this till the next meeting if you want.
My only question is, is, you know, again, I haven't really looked over this, but it assumes like, I'm assuming that we're taking the money that we received from ARPA and we'd be offering that to nonprofits, et cetera.
Potentially. So, so basically, you know, I'll recap the special town meeting discussion a little bit is that the, the things that were approved at special town meeting was roughly 25 to 30% of the funds. There's a big chunk left. And so now it's, you know, as part of the public input process of, well, okay, what are we going to use that money for? We've, it's also, it's, one potential use is a grant to a nonprofit organization. You know, like it could be Durham Historical Society, could be AMVETS, could be, you know, something else. Or there might be town projects like maybe refurbishing a ladder truck or maybe there's something at Public Works, like new garage doors. I don't know, I'm just making that up. But, you know, whatever it might be, then we would collect kind of, you know, build the wish list. And then from that wish list, we kind of have to, as a board, and we have to kind of, you know, based on public input and our own judgment, what do we put before voters for approval, for asked, requested approval at town meeting? But nonprofits are eligible. I think there's some conditions on that, but, you know, we need to flush that out.
No, I understand, thank you. I would just, you know, again, just looking at it from the high point level here, I would, I would think before we start looking into basically charities that we would make sure that all the town's needs and bases are covered before we would go out to, for essentially a third party.
Yep, yeah. And I think that would be, I think that's part of what we want to hear from the town. Like, you know, what are those priorities? Not just from, you know, general citizens, but also from the department heads. Like what are, what are kind of critical needs that, maybe not critical needs, I should, because hopefully we've covered most of the like critical needs with what we just did last week, but, but still needs, you know, we didn't cover everything last week. So what else, what else is out there that we didn't ask for funds for? And I think we need, so there's work to do there on the town side to kind of get our ducks in a row on what we think needs to be done or is the best use of that money for taxpayers. But others, other groups are free to submit an application to, you know, for some of those funds as well.
So for the, for the funds that are submitted, would that be determined by the town? And is the town already saying, hey, we want to take in applications for funds for nonprofits without even figuring out what this resource we could use here in town?
No, what?
I guess that's where I'm getting confused.
Well, basically, the ARPA law, the ARPA law, the law states what the eligible uses are.
Right, I get, I get your logic, I'm just asking, the priority, I would think, would have been out of the gate for the town, that's where the money was given.
And I think that's part of the priority discussion when we get that far. But I think it's kind of like, you know, I think of a funnel, you know, we're going to start wide and get narrow, right? So when we start wide, and we kind of promised this to the town at town meetings, like, you know, we're going to have some, some public input sessions on.
Oh, no, I think that's crucial. This is just the first time, and forgive me, I was on vacation last week. This is the first time that I've heard of, you know, the nonprofit entities being brought in. It was always somewhat, whether it would be in the beginning or even in the past select board meeting, the, the monies were always kind of, not necessarily earmarked, but trying to figure out how we could disperse these in the municipality as far as the town of Durham.
And my sense is that'll be the priority.
Okay.
But it's, it's.
I guess for clarification.
It's ultimately, it's still the board's decision. Right, we're the, this board will determine, you know, of all the information we get, you know, and all the potential things that might need to be done, you know, we're charged with taking that and deciding which questions to put before.
Sure. So is the nonprofit something that was brought up at the last meeting?
Yeah, that kind of came up, that came up at the last meeting. And I think the working assumption of a lot of people was that, was, we weren't aware that nonprofits would even be eligible for these funds.
Right, that's the first time I was hearing it.
Yep, yep. Turns out they can be in certain situations. And so there, when we start talking about, okay, what should we do with this, you know, 300,000 plus, whatever it is dollars, that there's an opportunity for those groups to say, hey, you know, we'd like to have X amount of dollars to do X, Y, and Z.
It must be pretty clear language in the, in the.
It is pretty clear, it's very clear on.
What you can and can't do, even as a nonprofit.
Yeah, I think, I think there's more research to be done there. And that's why we kind of charge the groups with providing that information. So like they need to say, yeah, you know, based on, you know, this section and have, they're going to have to actually, you know, reference the section of the law that authorizes, you know, what they're saying they want to use it for. And we'll verify that, of course, with the town attorney. They're, those, any group would be responsible for doing that.
Is there any?
Yes.
As part of your process and thinking forward, when Jerry and I were talking about this, we presumed, subject to your approvals or not, that the town projects that still are out there on the list would have to go through the same vetting process, using the same application process and justifications so that you as a body would be able to balance carefully the final decisions based on what are priorities, where's the best bang for the buck, where's the best return on investment?
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't dispute that because I think that does a couple of things. One is it, it doesn't, it doesn't make any determination as far as priority, but it, it gets everything in the same format. And so then, you know, I would envision, you know, these are public documents. I envision them being online and people, you know, can go and look at, you know, the various things and they can, you know, offer their input on what they think the priorities are too. Because they can kind of see everything in the same context, whereas versus, some things are formatted like this, but other things are formatted a different way. You know, everything formatted the same way for the, for the ARPA discussion. It just, it's more transparent and I think it's just easier to follow if everything's in the same format.
Has anyone asked the county, whether the county got any money?
County got a lot of money.
Yeah, I have not.
And so what are they doing with it?
They have their own budget committee, they have their own process, their own projects. They've had, they've had public meetings, I know Amy Skoggin has anyway, and I presume most other counties on what to do with the money.
So would you set up a like, just, again, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. Obviously, the original intent was to figure out some uses for these monies and bring it to the town and let them decide which way they want to grow. Would you set it up somewhat like a CIP where you would almost triage these to see what the best uses of this money was and who would?
I think that's up to us. I think that's part of our discussion tonight. Like would we use, would we want to, would we want to establish, you know, some general criteria? You know, like for instance, and we, this could get into the, we could put more specific questions on an application. Like for instance, we could say, you know, is there a financial benefit to the town if this money goes to this purpose? So like, for instance, to use as an example, you know, if, if the chief came and said, you know, we'd like ARPA funds to refurbish, you know, a fire truck rather than replace it, then the financial benefit to the town is that we don't have to use tax dollars, we don't have to use property tax dollars to fund that.
I should think that would come first.
Well, again, that would be, that would be part of the prioritization discussion. We're just talking about process right now. Like it's, it's, it's not about what are we going to decide, but how are we going to consider it and how, what's the decision-making process look like? So I think we, we get all those, like we might be sitting at the end, you know, of the process after, you know, a handful of public input opportunities and, you know, maybe there's a handful of organizations that submit applications and we, then we review it and we prioritize. Because my assumption is, and maybe, maybe it won't work out this way. We can send everything to voters. My assumption is we're going to have more requests than we have funds, right?
I would bet, I would bet so.
Right? So that's, we'll have to, we'll have to make some decisions as a board on, you know, what is most important, prioritize what's most important for the town as a whole.
Yeah, yeah.
And put that out to voters and voters will say yay or nay.
Yep. Interesting, I didn't realize it would be. From, from the original low, small scope of the ARPA funds, it's changed a lot.
It has changed tremendously. When it, when it first started, when it first came out.
Figure out what we'd do with it.
It was so restrictive that, yeah, there was literally almost nothing we could do with it. Because you could do like public water and sewer, which we don't have. You, you know, there were a few other things you'd do. You could have paid, you know, hazard pay, you know, to people. There are a few other things you could do. And there was this clause where you were, if you could demonstrate lost revenue because of the pandemic, then you could, you had a lot more leeway in terms of what you could spend it on under the lost revenue usage. And, but what they did is they, a later version of the bill, they applied essentially a $10 million exemption on the lost revenue. So basically, what the government said is you don't have to document your first $10 million of lost revenue. You know, think of it as like the standard deduction on your tax return, right? You may not have that many deductions, but you get to take that because that's the standard deduction. And so that's what enables a small community like Durham, who our budget's nowhere near $10 million, that's what enables us to have a lot more flexibility in how we use the ARPA funds as long as we meet other requirements of the law, so.
Interesting.
Chuck, may I say something?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So out of the six to 10 grant applications that I saw and looked online, the onus, the project justification, the onus is on the applicant. And there are going to be some hard questions and it's going to be a fair amount of work to fill out the grant application to meet those ARPA, ARPA legislation, those requirements. So it's not, it's not going to be, you know, a simple yes, no. There's going to be some, you're going to have to justify why, under the ARPA legislation, that this project shouldn't move forward. Grant writing is sometimes difficult and this is no different.
But you say the onus is on the individual, on the applicant, but the applicant's not necessarily the one giving the money. The onus is always on the one who distributes.
Well, the justification, right.
Correct.
As a fiduciary, you're making sure that A, it's a level playing field in terms of everyone has that opportunity who may be eligible. And then you have to discern based on the information given to you in their application, how that begins to rank, whether you rank project A better than project B becomes part of that. Ultimately, you have to have the backup documentation as fiduciaries to support the audit, which has to be turned in by 2026.
Right. And I think, you know, at some point, you know, we'll talk about, and you know, even tonight, like what, what are the most important criteria? Or some of the most important criteria we think need, that a project needs to have for us to think we might support it. And just to use an example that I've already used, you know, is there a financial benefit to the town? You know, that might be one of our criterias, like, you know, there needs to be a financial benefit to the town, you know, or, or that's a, maybe not be an absolute, but it might be like, that's a criteria that we put a lot of weight behind. If something doesn't have a financial benefit to the town, there better be some other benefit to the town in terms of, you know, a service provided or whatever, right? So that's, and so whatever we think of as criteria, we need to kind of build the application to pull out that information from the applicant on how are they meeting our criteria.
Yeah, it's going to take some time.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a, I don't think, you know, and again, but again, I don't think we want to overcomplicate it either. I mean, but it's kind of like, you know, citing the ARPA law, why you're, why you're eligible. What do you want to do with the money in detail? Like for instance, you can't say, you know, we need X number of dollars to invest in our, for improvements in our building. Okay, I think we would need to go the next step like, yeah, we need X number of dollars for improvement to the building, but we need, you know, you know, 30, we have bids that, estimates that it's going to be, take 30,000 for the roof and we need, you know, 10,000 for our new sump pump and drainage and we need, you know, whatever it is. So that we're comfortable that, you know, the money's going for a good, you know, purpose that benefits the town.
Yeah, I think, you know, again, we're just diving into this on the top level here, but, you know, from my perspective, this is kind of like your own personal finances when it comes to divvying out charity. First, you utilize the money for what it's kind of been noted for in terms of the town. And then if there's any leftover, then maybe you can take some applications for that standpoint. But it just seems like all of a sudden, we're, we're getting ahead of the town's needs and going to nonprofits' needs.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not just nonprofits though. I mean, that's kind of the example, but.
No, I, I get that. It's just we haven't even really determined what the town needs out of these funds and we're already looking at other avenues where we can use these funds.
I think all we're trying to do is, I hear what you're saying, but I, just because we put together a process and provide groups an opportunity to make their case, doesn't, doesn't, you know, if we take that and then when we start layering on, you know, the town's needs, if in our prioritization discussion say, look, you know, we need X dollars to do this within town buildings or town, whatever, there really isn't enough to do these other things, then that's it, that's where it is.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's kind of hits the nail on the head as far as my point goes. It's just, we haven't even determined out what the town needs yet. But we're kind of, for lack of better words, advertising that we, we may have funds available for nonprofits and other entities, et cetera. But we don't, we don't even know what that number is.
So what, what do you?
Well, I would think that we would, I would think that we would figure out what the town needs, whether it's like we did recently with the fire department, whether it's the old town hall. I mean, there's a lot of needs in this town that this money could be utilized for before. I mean, nonprofits have other avenues also, as does the town, taxes, et cetera. But the original intent, when this was laid upon us as far as discussing with the town and, and the select board, it was going to be, this was going to be monies used towards the town.
I don't think this discussion changes that at all.
No, I don't think it is.
Well, I'm not saying it changes it. I'm just saying it's, it's, it's providing, it's, it's opening up the doors for, we don't even know what we have.
But I think, but I think federal government did that.
No, I think you should figure out what the town's needs are before we start saying, hey, by the way, we're going to have an application process for, you know, private individuals. We don't even know what we need to earmark for ourselves.
And you think we need to do that first and then, well, before we offer others an opportunity to make their case?
I personally think that, based on the way this was presented out of the gate, yes. And the way that I think people, even myself, being on this board or being in, granted, I wasn't here last week. I was on vacation, but that was the original intent of the monies.
And I think that still is the intent. I don't think that's changed. The intent, I think the intent in general is to use those funds in the best interest of the town.
Okay, that's fair.
And that, that might mean that it all gets used on, you know, stuff within town government. Let's put, you know, what, what is under the purview of town government. But it might also be, for instance, it may not have to be an either or thing. Like for instance, if, if there were a couple of worthy things where if, you know, if we could peel off, you know, $10,000 to a particular group, then, you know, that $10,000 could mean, could be a huge deal to that organization and have a significant benefit to the town. Whereas having $10,000 less out of 300 and something thousand, you know, we might be able to, you know, deliver that. So that's, that's why I think, you know, having everything at once looked at in context with each other, that's where you can make prioritization. Because if all you have is the town stuff, because you, I mean, there's no, no, we'll spend the town stuff and it'll never get to anything else. But I think, and it might, that still might be the case realistically when we start having our prioritization discussion. But I think we should at least provide those group, any group, any, you know, whatever, the opportunity to kind of make their case. It may not make the cut, it may not happen, but at least, at least they've, maybe somebody will put something on the table that would be a great thing and we didn't think of it before we used up all the money and other things we were thinking of, so. I think we can, how about this, especially since there's only three of us here tonight, would you guys be okay with having Jerry to continue to kind of draft what an application might look like and then have, you know, have, continue this discussion at our next board meeting?
Yeah, I certainly don't have a, I certainly don't have a problem with that. Like I said, there was, there's really nothing in the agenda packet that I could.
Yeah.
Come in here with it, you know, it was kind of just, it's on the. Like I said, there was, there's really nothing in the agenda packet that I could come in here with, you know, it was kind of just, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, no, I, and it really.
So that's kind of hard to formulate right on. I mean, no, everybody's probably here for discussion and will listen to discussion, but there's really nothing that I could formulate, you know, a real true opinion on. But, um, yeah, I think so, I think, I think we could, you know, for lack of better words, plagiarize from some other communities and so forth and see what they've done in the past. I, I think one of the questions that I think is important on here, whether it's private business or the private sector and in terms of nonprofits and so forth is, what, how much money or have they received monies from the federal government so far? Whether it's in the form of PPP or things of that nature, um.
That could be one of the questions on the application.
Well, I think that's what I was, that's what I was getting at, if we, if we had some type of question like that to make sure that, um.
Have you received other COVID relief funds of some sort or whatever, detail that, yep.
Also, also, do you suppose they could go to the county for the same thing?
I don't, I don't know how the county process is working.
It's a question, I didn't think we'd, yeah, yeah.
It's a good question.
Yeah.
My suspicion, depending if it's a, if it's a purely local thing, like, you know, I'll use the Amets Hall as an example because I know they're, they're interested, um, you know, I suspect, I don't know, but I suspect if they went to the county, the county would tell them, well, that's a local thing, you need to go to your town.
Yeah, I was just talking, I.
Whereas if somebody wanted a regional transportation thing throughout the county, that, you know, that might be a different.
Yeah, I think the county with so many resources, they have so many places that they could probably utilize this money and, I mean, it's.
They're simply using money.
Buildings, et cetera, so, okay.
All right, so I think where we are is, um, if you, based on this discussion, I think, you know, do you feel like you have what you need to at least go to the next, you know, next draft of an application?
Mm-hmm.
And like, get at some of the questions that we talked about that we'd be interested in having, you know, query people on about their suggested projects.
Yes.
You've done a lot already.
Yeah, and we'll talk more in our meeting, at our next meeting. Because we, you know, we kind of, on the, the timetable that was laid out, we kind of have, you know, August, September is the time period that we're, that we're doing this, what we're doing right now, it's like, what is the, what is this process going to look like?
Yeah, can you refresh me, when do we have to use the monies?
Yeah, so we have to, we have to have allocated, which means approved by voters, what the money's gonna be used for by the end of twenty, twenty twenty four. And then the money has to actually be expended by the end of twenty six. So for instance, you know, you could, you know, say, the town could, and I'm making this up, we're not asking for this. The town, you know, yeah, by the end of twenty four, the town approves spending two hundred thousand dollars on a expansion of the town office. You know, that money would have to be spent for that purpose by the end of twenty six. But it was approved by the end of twenty four.
But it off, it gives you the flexibility of maybe doing this in rounds, like the first round we're accepting.
I think that's an excellent point because, um, one of the tricky things here is that, you know, we can't just take all the questions and send them to the voters, right? Because if they approve everything and that's more money than we have, that, so we can't do that. So we gotta figure out, how do we ask, you know, at any one meeting, only what we actually have funds for? So it might be that, you know, in the town meeting, twenty-three town meeting, we get eighty, ninety percent of the way there, whatever. And then we might have to, whatever the next town meeting is, April twenty-four or whatever, okay, we've got this much left that hasn't been allocated yet. What are we gonna do with it, you know, so we don't, it doesn't, we don't have to allocate the whole nut like right now.
Yeah, I think, I don't think I would.
Right.
Um, so my last question, and I apologize again, I just wasn't.
No, no, it's fine, that's what we're here for.
Um, twenty-six, the money has to be, um, expended.
Out of the checking account.
Does it have to be out of our checkbook into the end users and the end user has to be done with it? Or does it just have to be out of our checkbook? For example, if we give twenty thousand dollars to, for lack of better words, the local, whatever, Sonic Society or whatever, do, do they have to use that money by the twenty-six?
I don't believe so.
Or does it just have to be out of our hands?
You have to go back and check, Mr. Chairman, but my quick and dirty memory tells me in the order report that is sent back to the federal government, how was the money used? Now, how do you define used? Encumbered but not expended?
See, I would think it would have to be expended.
You can't encumber for an outside, an outside organization, right? So, so let's say if we, if we granted, um, you know, five thousand dollars to Durham Softball, right? So I don't think, and we wrote Durham Softball a, a check on December thirtieth, twenty twenty six. I don't think they have to spend it by December thirty-first, twenty twenty six, but we need to confirm that, we need to.
Yeah, and I only ask that because ki- kind of the reasoning behind this was kind of that, get America back to work and they wanted to get this money into circulation by X amount of time. So if you write Durham Softball, let's say a check on the last day of the year of the December of two thousand twenty-six and they don't cash till two thousand twenty-seven, does that count as expended?
Spirit and intent.
I think that's a, I think that's a good question to, you know, to follow up on and get an answer to.
My interpretation of spirit and intent is by twenty-four, you've made a commitment to project X. And over the next eighteen to twenty-four months, you're going to expend those monies, not put it in your bank account and collect interest and wait.
That's actually, and that's a good point, like on the, on the softball thing, we would have had to have allocated by the end of twenty-four.
Yeah.
So I guess if you give it, if you gave it to them at, at the beginning of twenty-five, but they still hadn't spent it by the end of twenty-six, what happens?
It may be a recapture.
Does the money turn to dust or something?
Unless there's a forgiveness clause that has yet to be legislated.
I'd be surprised if there's, once it's been awarded, if there's any requirements beyond that, but.
Perhaps one of the questions that Jerry should consider putting in the application, if awarded, will you be able to complete the project prior to date certain?
Yeah, like it's.
Paid in full.
I don't know if it's a requirement, but I know a lot of times they do, I just, you know, you, you know, your fear is, you know, it's a poor reference, but you know, like the, the money brewster, you know, you end up with, you know, somebody drops you off a check for twenty thousand dollars at the end of your thirty million, then you gotta, you don't get nothing, you know?
Every community that I know is delving into this, is not wanting to put this in the bank and just collect interest, they want it to work.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Do you, have you got what you need on that one for now?
I do.
And you could certainly, you know, we can now follow up conversations in the meeting.
I, I do wanna say, I mean, if, if they're saying allocated by twenty-four, then there's no more to allocate and they just want that spent by twenty-six, they're giving you two years, so.
Yeah, you have to expend it by the twenty twenty six.
Right, so you may allocate it all towards a bridge, but it's gonna take a couple of years to get that bridge done.
Right.
They want it done by twenty twenty six, something to that effect.
Yep. Okay.
All right.
All right, so moving on, so now, um, we have a public comment.
I'll move out of the way, Jerry moves up the seat, I'll sit there with the permission of the board.
Yep, and I will say, you know, tonight would not be the, well, I guess, you know.
Take my seat.
I would, public comment is open, but tonight was not the night to advocate for a specific ARPA project. Okay, that, that will come later, okay? All right, any public comments?
Alan Perrickton, Day Road. You know, there, last year, there was a presentation by the DOT about Dead Man's Curve and the possibility of adding a blinking light that is down the Haka Road, uh, in Brunswick. Uh, granted, this is kind of a question as to what the status of that might be. And the other thing, this is public, uh, works questions, I guess. And Tracy Bridge, which is on Meadow Brook, that's about a half a mile from, on one twenty-five when you turn across the, that was supposed to be replaced, and the last time I knew was supposed to be this fall.
Yep.
And the reason I'm asking that is because, uh, there was gonna be work done on Swamp Road and I know that's being delayed because of requirements have changed. Because the Swamp Road was done in Tracy Brook, I'm in between, and it's how do I get around? So that's why I'm asking these questions.
Yeah, um, I don't know, Calvin's not here tonight, I don't know if he has heard anything specific from DOT. I did, uh, happen to check the DOT work plan probably two weeks ago. And both the lights you talk about, a Dead Man's Curve and the Tracy Bridge are still on the work plan for this year. But, you know, whether that's actually happening or not, I'm not, I can't, I don't know. Because those work plans don't say, yeah, we're starting on this date, it just says it's, it's on the plan, is, oh. Can we have Calvin reach out to DOT and, and see if we can get an update on that?
I have seen them down there surveying at Tracy Bridge.
Yeah, so.
Beyond that, I haven't seen anything beyond that, but they have surveyed it.
Thank you. Okay.
Hello, my name is Nathan Ledger, I live on Brianna Drive. Uh, sticking with the ARPA funds and I'll be, um, to, to tonight's conversation of the process of the whole thing. First off, I wanna thank the town and commend the select board and the town managers for having open ears and at least having the discussion and bringing up the articles last week that I voted in favor of, because in order to have a working town, the gears need to be fluid and operating appropriately, so I, I voted in favor of all that. It does concern me, however, that on the US Department of Treasury website, in January of twenty twenty-two this year, eight months ago, they put out a coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds overview of the final rule, eight months ago. And in this forty-two page packet that I have read every single word of, it's, explains and answers all of your questions about nonprofits, about how to spend the money, where to spend the money, what to do with the money. It, it lays it out pretty extensively, um, specifically about nonprofits on page twenty-three. Now's not the time to go over that, but I highly recommend that we look at that. It also concerns me that we have already spent twenty to thirty percent of the funds without having to go through an application process that we're now creating or coming up with and having questions on how do we spend this money, when the guidelines were laid out in January of this year, eight months ago. Moving forward, the only question I have is those six articles that were, and I, and I don't mind being educated, I love learning. Those six articles that were moved and put to the town vote didn't go through any type of process. I, I, I take that back, I, I don't discredit all of the work, I apologize.
Please.
I'm retracting that immediately. Um, uh, it, but this expanded, uh, thing that we're discussing now, it didn't get through that, it just went straight to the town for vote. We were not apprised to the line items that you may, when you come up with this application process. I asked specific questions last week about the forty-five thousand dollars that were spent for technology. I agree with it, spend it, but I didn't have a line item of how many computers, how many wireless internet stuff, whatever. There was never a breakdown, and so I just cautioned to not set up an application process so, uh, complicated uh, that the original six articles didn't have to follow that same process. My next question is, uh, if, i- if there's a legislation in the main state law, I believe it's titled twenty-a, of a citizens initiative, if the town finds out about these funds, is there a way to ask them, I, I, I should, if, if there was ten percent of the voters in the last gubernatorial election that sign a petition and say, yes, I know about these funds, I agree with the US Treasury that put out in January in twenty twenty-two that they could be spent for these funds, nowhere in that article does it talk about prioritizing? Nowhere in the final review does it say that it has to be spent on X, Y, or Z, it just, it's a blanket, it could be spent on all these things. Now, as a government, you have to do it appropriately, I, and I'm all about having those conversations about doing it appropriately. My question, though, is if the town finds out about it and does sign a petition and it does go to vote on the ballot, how will the select board, uh, react to those type of votes or those type of things? And how quickly, if that does happen, and there is a vote and the citizens, you know, sign the petition, you get ten percent, everybody wants to see it on the ballot, and it would read exactly like it read last week. Do you approve spending X amount of dollars on X amount of charity from the ARPA funds? Yes or no, question mark? And if that was to move so fast as maybe this November, how are you going to adjust your planning on this application process for other nonprofits to get involved? Or other entities or other town workings, uh, the municipality? Um, so I just wanted to put that out there so that we can generate more discussion and topic about it. It, it's right on the website, it's literally titled, uh, Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Overview of the Final Rule. And it was, uh, put out in January of twenty twenty-two this year. And it would answer all the questions you need on how ARPA is funded. And that's all I have for public comment.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, this is Deb Oliver from College Ridge Road.
Welcome, Jerry.
Thank you.
Um, I have a couple of things, first off, I'd just like to say for the record that I'm in favor of the board soliciting all input from the community on, um, using those funds. I think it's important for you to have a full picture in front of you when you do start prioritizing and going through that. The other thing I wanted to talk about is both the Homestead Act and the Act where the seniors can fill out paperwork to have their taxes frozen or whatever. I was just wondering if there are metrics on how many residents of Durham participate in both of those programs? And how many, um, community members are, um, able to participate or qualified to participate? And if we do have those metrics, is there a way possibly to, um, create a program or contact individuals who are not participating but could and get a full one hundred percent participation? I think there are folks that could use the assistance and why not have everybody get those benefits if possible? So I don't know the rules about how to, if all that can be made public or the numbers could be made public possibly, but not the names, and if we do have the names of people not participating that could, could a volunteer come in and help contact those people? Would that be in accordance with some rules or whatever? But I think that, um, would be really good if the town, if the town of Durham was a hundred percent participating in both of those programs for community members who are eligible.
To, uh, to answer your question, um, the town has in the past periodically, uh, reached out to people that are not claiming the homestead exemption and made them aware that, you know, you qualify, but they gotta, they gotta come in and fill out the application. And the, 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 uh, senior, I don't know what the actual name of it is, but the property tax freeze law, that's a new law. So that's, and so we do have information out on the website now, I believe, on applying for that, and we have re, um, materials here, um, so I don't know if anybody's applied yet. That one's gonna be trickier because on that one, uh, people need to apply for that every year.
Yeah.
Whereas the homestead, once you apply, that's it, you know, you're, you're in, you know, unless you break qualification for some reason, so. But I think, uh, yeah, I think the town staff agrees that, you know, we should, um, get as many people participating in that as possible because the town doesn't lose any money on that, it gets reimbursed by the state, you know, so you could say, well, it's your state tax dollars paying for it. And it is, you know, it's coming from somewhere, um, but in, in terms of the impact of property taxes, the town is made whole, if you will, so.
And if it is like legal to have people volunteer to help support reaching those goals, how, how volunteer?
Okay, yeah, great. Her name's Deb Oliver, so you can, you can. Any other public comments?
Jill Gastongay, Stackpole Road, um, I guess I like the idea as well, getting all the applications in front of whomever is gonna review them. I think, I like, I grew up with charity starts at home, but I think defining what home is in this town might be a little different for me. I kind of see the government maybe being mom and dad, but, you know, some of the charities or nonprofits or other organizations are the kids in the family and they may have a good point how it can help the family or help at least a large part of the family. So I think that's an important question to consider on the application. I would recommend that the board considers creating a committee like the CIP, um, and the hiring committee where you do have, um, I like the CIP part where it's literally like a number system. So when you are looking at the applications, they all get points, and then that's kind of how they reach to the top of the priority list, or at least you see, the select board sees the points that were generated. Um, and in a part of the hiring committee, how it was a combination of public and townspeople within that committee. Um, I think that shows the transparency and, you know, public input as well. Um, I also like the point of having the applications made available online. Um, especially, or all of the projects posted somehow, especially if we're not voting on all of them. Um, because I might withhold my vote knowing that in twenty twenty-four, you know, the AMVETS are coming up and I'd rather the, you know, the funds go to the AMVETS or the fire truck is coming up and I'd rather the funds go to the fire truck next year. Um, so definitely making sure the townspeople aren't blindsided like, oh, if I had known, I would have changed how I voted. Um, I think part of the thought process should be consideration of future costs of the town. Um, I think it was, you know, what's the cost benefit, but also what's the cost detriment? Are we starting a new government program that we're gonna have to then keep going in the following years? Um, there's one thing that Nathan said that I disagree with a little bit because I paid attention a lot to how the warrants got created for the special town meeting. I really think we need estimates, not guesstimates. Um, and there were a couple warrant articles that were just that. They were guesstimates. Um, and I think if we're going to allocate the funds, we need to know exactly what we're allocating them for. Um, and then um another thought that I had, and I don't even know how this would work out or if it's even legal or possible or anything, but on the November election day, is there a way that we can ask the townspeople? Kind of like a ranked choice voting, but rank your voting choices of how you'd like ARPA funds to be spent. You know, with town government, you know, increased future services, charity, the kids, the seniors, I don't know, you guys can make it up. But in a sense, you're polling the town ahead of time to kind of get an idea of where where they do prioritize spending the funds.
Um, just to answer, yes, that is possible. In fact, I actually talked with Mitch about it earlier today, and we've done it in the past. I don't know if you remember, two years ago, we did that with regard to marijuana regulations. It's it's a non-binding referendum is what it's called, and it's essentially a survey. And there have been a couple other questions that have come up that we thought we might survey, like for one is, you know, are are people interested in seeing a fireworks ordinance in town, you know? And to get, because that's a tough one to get a sense of unless you do some sort of a survey. So the answer to your question is yes, it's possible. We just started, you know, talking about, you know, what that might look like for, you know, if we can pull that off in November.
Um, and to Deb's point about the homestead act and the seniors, I don't have a whole lot of free time, but I'm always willing to help too. Um, I was a homeowner, I think, for almost seven years before anybody even told me about the homestead act, and even my parents were like, what? We never told you? Um, so I think definitely any communication campaign is always a great idea. Thank you.
Anyone else?
It wrapped me, sorry about that. Um, Darren Baker, Runaround Ponder.
Thank you.
Um, this may be more of a question, uh, um, because I'm just learning about the the ARPA funds. And I heard some conversations about, you know, examples of spending. I'm not saying that's that's your intent, but um, what I didn't hear was the criteria with which this whole thing was set up for. Not just fixing the bridge because it's needs to be fixed, but how 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 the how that project is related or had suffered uh as a as a result of the coronavirus, um, you know, financially. So is that still part of the consideration? Is that, have the rules changed?
Well, the the rules, um, so there's four general categories, and one of them is uh the lost revenue category, and that's the one that has the um, you know, the ten million dollar exemption, if you will, that essentially allows a smaller community or any community for the first ten million dollars of ARPA funds, which we obviously don't have that much, have a lot more flexibility in on what to do with it. Like, it can be used for, you know, it can be used for, you know, a fire truck or improvements at the town office. It it it's not, I think to answer your question, like, no, there doesn't have to be a direct in uh link to COVID impacts, uh, as far as we understand. Now, to to Nate's point earlier, you know, Nate, I'm sure knows that law a lot better than we do right now, but quite honestly, because we had a long runway and a lot of time, we had other priorities before we were studying that law. We're kind of at that point now. So that's, so we're, he he's a lot further down the road than we are uh on that. So um, but I think to answer your question, no, no, it's not necessarily a requirement to demonstrate that whatever you're spending the money on is a result of impacts from the pandemic.
You had stated earlier that 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 ten million dollar um exemption, that was for um uh justification or auditing purposes?
Yeah, so the way the law was originally put out there, it, um, one of the categories was lost revenue. But in order to uh, so if a town could say, yeah, we lost, you know, um two hundred thousand dollars in excise tax revenue because nobody was buying cars during the pandemic. You could essentially, if you document that two hundred thousand dollar loss of revenue, you could essentially use that two hundred thousand dollars on, uh, not whatever you want, but within the limits of the law, like you can't pay off debt and, you know, of the the few restrictions there are. You could do what you want with it. We, Durham actually really, we had really no lost revenue. You know, our excise tax actually went up uh during the pandemic. We had no problem collecting property taxes, so we had no lost revenue to document. But then the later uh in the process, on the final rule, the government changed that lost revenue portion of the law and said, basically brought in this ten million dollar exemption. It said, every every unit is assumed to have had ten million dollars lost revenue, whether you actually did or not. And so that's what, you know, so the first ten million dollars of ARPA funds you can uh use under that lost revenue purpose and which enables you to, you know, a small town like Durham, which we run on public water, we have a public sewer, you know, um to to use it for other things that would benefit the town.
The last paragraph of that article Nate was talking about, I, because I was like hearing things, it does say additional general restrictions. The SL FRF funds may not be used for a project that conflicts with or contravenes the purpose of the American Rescue Plan Act statute. Um, EG uses funds that undermine COVID nineteen mitigation practices in line with CDC guidance and recommendations. I mean, that that just still speaks strongly to the spirit of what the money was for. So I guess I'm asking you guys to.
I think it says it can't undermine those, it's, it can't undermine the mitigation.
I understand. I'm I'm sort of generalizing, you know, that I'm hoping you guys you really focus that in that in that regard when you make your your, you know, your applications that it's an important piece. I think that's what the money was for. Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, we will close public comments and move on to the agenda. Fire chief report.
You're Fire Chief Rob Tripp. I will certainly make this brief, if for no other reason, to lure Town Manager Douglas into thinking we're brevity around here, so. We completed pump testing last week on our four major apparatus, two pumpers, the Quint and our tanker. And next week, one of those pumpers will be going out for fixing issues found during pump testing. Um, not a lot of issues, and that's engine twenty-one. It's a two thousand four engine, our oldest. So um, going local to Auburn, a couple of uh primary type of pump issues. Um, that is always in my budget for fixing. We started a discussion on restarting our firefighter explorer program. That's for ages roughly fourteen to eighteen, but that's with the Boy Scouts. That has a fee. I've had others in the past work through that program. There certainly, the instructors are vetted through the scouts and sort of like quarry checks, police, that type of stuff. You pay a fee for that. Um, but that is identified as one way to really get volunteers. So you start them young at fourteen. A lot of them are family members. They love it. They get their license. They start more active. By eighteen, they're getting their EMT and really giving us time. I did have a volunteer stop by today. He's moving into town. I think it's the Pound Road. Uh, very excited from Montana. So it was like dropped in our lap, I'll take it, all day long. Uh, we did get our new SCBA's, our air tanks, from the capital improvement uh that was voted on last year, sixty-three thousand. Those are in service, ready to go, uh, which we appreciate. So the bill will be coming due, but um all the crews appreciate. Uh, they were up uh for renewal anyways. You might have heard recently Sabados actually called us, the town. They had a mass casualty incident on a motor vehicle accident, up to ten patients. We sent our rescue and transported out of there. I think it was at least a crew of three uh in a timely fashion. So um, we weren't training, but there was one person at the station, uh, met up with two and went all the way to Sabados, took care of a patient and transported. And that's what the mutual aid is really about. So I was proud of those guys, uh, very timely fashion and took care of a sick individual. Uh, real quick, save the date again, October fifteenth. It will be on the town's website. Is our open house a- and the entire town is invited, uh, ten to two at the station, and I expect the entire town to be there.
The fifteenth of October?
It is. It is October fifteenth.
Ten to two?
Ten to two.
Hot dogs? What are you doing there?
Uh, we will grill them. You bring them. We'll grill them.
Oh.
We'll work on it. Thank you for the suggestion.
I like mine red.
Of course you do, yes. Um, I'm gonna start tonight. A a a topic, it's called On the Radar. We won't get into discussion, but the, tonight, there's two topics. Dry hydrants. So as we know, the town doesn't have any municipal fire hydrants. We have twenty-five dry hydrants. And more, most recently, I've been informed, uh, Brianna Drive, I believe, is dry.
Meaning the pond itself is like dry?
Pond itself has dried up, drought conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah, can we confirm that right? Yeah.
I can confirm that. It's dry.
Um, and again, eh, On the Radar, because I will be having discussion with the planning board, with the select board, really where we go from here. Other towns are taking that fire pond out for that reason in their articles and their discussion and their planning and putting only two choices now, a cistern or sprinklers. Residential new construction sprinklers.
Individual cisterns?
Individual cisterns, up to like ten thousand gallons, that type of stuff. Um, for each new house, new occupant, really.
For the swimming pool count?
No.
I know, right?
Um, again, On the Radar, and the reason I bring it up, again, uh, you know, we test these. The town or the fire department sort of doesn't own them. These are really about homeowners associations. Homeowners associations have gone defunct. We don't, don't, there's nobody to talk to or send a bill to. Again, On the Radar, these are things that are coming across my desk, and I need you to be aware of them.
Don't we currently require sprinklers and subdivisions?
So.
One of the, one of the options.
One of the options, yep. So a cluster, you know, above three type of thing, three to five, um, you can do a hydraulically calculated fire pond. You can do cisterns, individual cisterns, or you can opt for individual sprinkler systems protection. The chief has to sign off. The planning board's well aware of it. Uh, again, on the onus of the developer to do that. But I have recognized the problem now with homeowners associations going defunct or people move out. Nobody knows where there was. There's not really documentation. They're sort of on the hook really for keeping those uh retention ponds up to speed and and whatnot, and and I know of two that that's not the case currently. We do test them. I've tested nine out of the twenty-five so far. We'll probably test another nine Thursday night. So and again, drought conditions, so there are times where we can't use those dry hydrants around town. The the other thing on on the radar is EMS response, you know, medical response. I was just told today and confirmed, the town of Auburn will not be sending their second ambulance, their second rescue to normal routine medical calls. And I think that was towards a private ambulance company that they border.
You mean within their own town they're not going to do that?
On their, on their boundaries, on their mutual aid partner boundaries. So they bow, they sort of are surrounded by a couple that are do, are contracted with private ambulances, private for profit ambulances, and they're being used a lot more. I bring it up on the radar because it affects Durham. That policy may affect Durham of not sending a second rescue out. Or if they don't send a second rescue out, Lisbon does back up a private ambulance company, and then we have to back up Lisbon when they're out of position, if you will. A- and that's happened several times recently. So again, On the Radar of discussion of other towns' choices affect us a- a- and proportionate to our rescue. Again, we're doing five hundred responses, three sixty-five with the ambulance. However, y- you know, we've done three in the last twenty-four hours. Sometimes you go days without it, but when other people's choices, other towns' payment, lack of, or whatever, uh, uh, starts to affect us, I just want it on the radar and and we can discuss it later, but that is what's happening.
Chief, I also want, just to put, maybe put on your radar, I can't remember, there was a there was an article or a news article fairly recently, I can't remember the town, but where they were, they were going to bill for a lot more calls. They were gonna bill insurance companies for response calls. And that has come up here before?
I saw that, and that was in direct relation to motor vehicle accidents. They were gonna bill insurance companies for some of the services.
Yeah.
And again, that's also on the radar. That has come up. I have a pamphlet with, with it offered that opportunity.
Yeah.
I think that was tabled for for a new town manager uh to see if if that's in the plan going forward. I do have information on that.
Okay.
Um, and that was very difficult for that town because you cannot differentiate between, well, he's a longtime local and he crashed recently, or it's an out-of-towner buzzing through type of thing.
Yep.
Um, it was sort of all or nothing in within parameters.
Yep. Okay.
Um, and we do offer those services. We mitigate fluids. We do a lot of traffic control. I mean, we do foot the bill, and I say we, the town of Durham, foots the bill for hourly, like the other night. They were out there for an hour or two directing traffic. Uh, they're certified to do so, and we have the equipment.
But again, just put it on the radar. I don't want to get into the actual discussion tonight, but something we should talk about at some point.
I I know we talked about revenue increasing, and that was one from the fire department side. Uh, and last, uh, I would be remiss if I don't thank uh Mitch for his work and being a friend to the fire department. I've learned a lot. I've I've relied on him for six months, a- and I appreciate it, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Any questions for me, Ward? Jerry?
Nope, no questions.
All right.
Well, see? Thank you, thank you.
And Calvin's not here.
No, Calvin came in to see me today, and he said he had nothing new to report.
Okay, so, but he will next week after he checks with the DOT and follows.
Okay, all right. Okay, uh, Town Manager's report.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So uh Xfinity apparently is doing some channel changes, so we want everyone to know, the residents to know, that they may see some funny stuff going on with their channels. So PFAS, the, also known as the Forever Chemicals. So we got a letter from the DEP uh stating that uh they will be monitoring wells. It's it, it's not coming anytime soon. They just want it on our radar that uh they will be looking at water quality at wells. Right now, they're really concentrating in Fairfield and that area.
Yeah, right.
But they, they will branch out to other communities when they.
Are they, so are they talking about like a voluntary program or some sort of mandatory program, or do we know yet?
No, no.
Okay.
No, just, it's just on the radar that it's, it's unlikely coming.
Okay.
So the town also received some of the homestead, um, two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars for the homestead exemptions. So I want you to know that. And the HVAC system, uh, we signed a contract yesterday. Uh, they will be starting tomorrow.
Oh, great.
Good.
So they're estimated to be he- So they're estimated to be here two weeks, so it's a week, unit a week, be at two weeks, and then they'll move over to the fire department. And they're, hopefully, said they would be done by the end of September.
Okay, great.
So, that's...
End of August or end of September?
End of September. Cause September's just... And that's all I got for, for right now.
Any questions, Jerry?
Other than welcome.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, welcome. The Phidium, we talked about this this afternoon, but can you find out what Phidium is doing?
Phidium?
Yeah, it's Phidium Internet, they're running fiber optic around the town. And for some reason, they never said anything to us. I don't, I'm not sure they really needed to, but it'd be free advertising for them, so I would think that they would let us know. Come here and get on the, get on everybody's radar. It's gonna be a Comcast situ, it's gonna be a Comcast earnings situation, I think, is...
Well, we don't know anything about it, right? I mean, they might just be passing through.
No, they're not, they're not passing through, they're running through.
Could be like the energy conductor here, it's not really working here, it's just going through.
Yeah, exactly, right. No, if you haven't gotten a pamphlet, they've already sent out pamphlets, and it's pretty cheap, internet fiber optic. The speed is fast both ways, very fast both ways, two gig.
Let's at least find out so that the people call.
And what's the name of them again?
Phidium.
Phidium?
If you look it up, it...
Did you call IDIUM?
Look them up on the web.
I thought you got something in the mail.
Our IT specialist.
Might be something we need to explore for the town.
So, but, yeah, I mean, it'd be good to know just so if people ask questions, but ultimately, this is, it's a private business doing whatever.
Apparently, they're, they're putting in fiber optic for consolidated communications, it's the two of them together. The phone company and this internet company are coming together to do fiber optic and...
Can, this is gonna sound snide, and I don't mean it to sound this way, but
Oh, go ahead.
What does that have to do with town business?
Well, I'm, I'm a little surprised that they didn't come to the town to say so, at least, because the...
Not our goal, do you think they needed some, are you saying you think they needed some kind of permit or something?
No, I think it'd be free advertising for them. You know, everybody's wondered.
Well, I think you've taken care of that. Hey, next week, we'll get you a T-shirt that you can wear online. How do you, Phidium? Who knows, I mean, I doubt it.
We know that Comcast is up for renegotiation of their franchise fee and license, and that'll be something that you and Jerry will be working with, but you're absolutely right.
I would think it'd be direct competition.
PUC is the ones who probably had to deal with them
Yeah, yeah.
More than anything, and then when they're full and ready and up and running, I expect they're gonna go hard and heavy on competition with existing providers, and it's gonna be a buyer's market.
Yeah, that would be good, competition is good.
We hope.
Yeah, especially for Comcast.
Yeah. Supposedly get the employees to hang it up.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Jerry? Old business, a general summary review, the town meeting warrant article, we've kinda already covered this, I mean, the four spending articles all passed, all pretty handily. There wasn't, there wasn't, they weren't all unanimous, but they were all overwhelmingly approved. And there were not a terrible turnout for a special town meeting, I mean, you always wanna see more. My guess is there were thirty-ish people that weren't there because they were on a committee or had a role of some sort, you know, that just came. Guessing around thirty. Yep, okay. Then as far as next steps, we've already heard, you know, the HVC's already going, and then we'll get periodic updates, you know, as things happen, you know, Jerry will keep us up to speed on, on, on what's going on there. I will say that, you know, to, to the point that a couple people made and that I agree with, and I think we would all agree with it, and it's a learning for next time, is that you know, whenever we're bringing a spending proposal or anything to the town floor, there, there should be a physical handout, a sheet that clearly like on the tech one says, you know, it's forty-five thousand dollars, and and it, it's okay, I would disagree with Jill a little bit, I, we, I don't believe it's necessary or even possible to have actual to the penny, this is what it's gonna cost, you gotta have good, solid estimates based on information from, from vendors. That, that's reliable enough to know how much money you need to ask for, but it should be spelled out in, you know, at least enough detail that people feel confident they know what the money's for, like all right, it's forty-five thousand dollars, and we expect, you know, five thousand's gonna be for the firewall, and six thousand's gonna be for this, and you know, up to twelve thousand for laptops, depending on how much is left, you know, just so that people have, understand the context, so. That's just, just a good learning for going forward to anticipate the questions people are gonna have and answer them, because when, when people are left to fill in the blanks on their own, it, it generally doesn't go well, so.
I would, could I just add to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think you're absolutely right, providing an exact estimate today, an estimate today is no good tomorrow, so. A lot of times, what, how we could do it is we budget for a certain, many computers, like three or four or six, and this is what we're budgeting for it. But to nail down a price is really
I agree.
It's really making, it's backing us or myself into a corner, cause I don't know if I could back it up three weeks later or four weeks later, or...
I think that's why you budget, like say, you know, we're budgeting two thousand dollars per workstation. We think we can, we need like five workstations, so it's ten thousand dollars. It might actually cost eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars, or it might cost ten thousand, one hundred and two dollars, and you gotta get the hundred and two dollars from somewhere else within that article, but but, you, you know, I think we're on the same page.
Oh, I definitely agree, there needs to be more detail in that, yes.
That's not to take away from the work that Devon and others did, cause I think they did the work, I just think we didn't just go that final step and have it in a presentable format for the meeting, so. Okay, so, move, oh, actually, so with the amendment to the agenda, I am going to move that we go into assessor's session to deal with some abatements and supplements. Was that a motion? It was a motion. Rich, seconds, all in favor? Okay, we are in assessor's session, so we have, we got a doozy tonight. It's a little complicated, well, actually, it's not that complicated, so basically, there was a, a subdivision that the previous code enforcement officer asked the assessor's agent to assign lots to and put them on the tax rolls. The problem is, the subdivision wasn't approved yet, so that step should not have happened, and they shouldn't have been taxed as if they were an approved building lot, because they weren't, they're just raw land, which would be a different tax assessment.
Well, that's strange.
So, yeah, it, this one is very strange, so. This one is, so, and I'll just read what Donna wrote, so she says, "I have multiple abatements and supplementals that need approval regarding property identified as part of map four lot thirty-two and owned by Curtis and Janice Pass. I was approached by our prior CEO to assign lot numbers to six lots off Holiday Drive. I had seen the draft of the proposed splits and believed the subdivision to have been approved. This was not the case, and six lots were split and a sale that happened..." This sentence doesn't make sense, "and a sale happened for the twenty-twenty-one tax year," I think that's what it is. "There were two lots that were sold prior to April first, twenty-twenty-two, that will require supplemental bills to correct ownership and the location of a new dwelling." So, the first part is an abatement to Curtis and Janice Pass on five of the lots, and the amounts are, you guys don't have copies of this, do you?
Well, I was, I was just gonna say, this is kinda what I was referencing earlier, I mean, the, the, coming to these meetings would just, this is the first time you see it, it's impossible for me, I gotta have some context coming into these meetings, I just can't get something read to me.
I just got that from the assessor, and I understand.
Oh, I understand that, but maybe it goes on the next meeting.
Yeah, so, all right, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we table this.
I agree, again. And let's get the information sent out, let's...
So, and I think, yeah, I had a brief conversation with, with, with Jerry and Mitch before the meeting, and basically making the point that you are, Rich, that there should be nothing that the board comes into a meeting and reads for the first time, so. Everything, it should, when the agenda goes out on Friday, the, the packet should be with it, like a PDF form, like, so any, any of this stuff, you know, the warrant, basically, any, you know, any, you know, the really, we, when we were, for a while there, it should be the reports from department heads, like, everything should be there. And if it's, if it's not confidential, meaning like not public record, then it can be in the PDF and it can be posted with the agenda, you know, that's available for anybody to read, so. But, you know, that's just, it's just part of the continuous improvement process, right, so. So, but I agree that this one is, so we'll need to PDF these abatements and supplementals, and maybe, maybe have Donna provide a little bit more detailed context. And I know, and, and she can, and if she could address, like, and we ran into this the last time we had an abatement and a supplemental, there was, we were going to abate one person for a particular amount on a property and supplementary, supplementally tax another one. And in our minds, those two amounts should be the same, but, but they weren't, they were really close, they were within like a couple of bucks, but if, our expectation is that they'd be the same, but if they're not, and I'm sorry, I keep looking at Mitch out of habit, but, but if they're not the same... If they're not the same, an explanation, well, why aren't they the same? And then, so that we'll understand and not have that expectation if we shouldn't have that expectation, so, all right? All right, so, any objection to tabling the, hearing none, consider that tabled, then I'm gonna move us out of assessor's session, second, all in favor? All right, we now return to our regularly scheduled program, already in progress. So now we are on, we have an authorized satisfactory judgment, read Dean Smith, so remember, you know, previously, we voted approve the final settlement and that he had met the conditions, and
Dean Smith.
Dean Smith, right, now what we're being asked to do is to basically vote to acknowledge that we have actually received the payment and cashed the check that he owed us for the, this, on the, in the settlement. So, I'm going to move that we acknowledge the receipt of twenty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-five and fifty dollars from Dean Smith as settlement for the action brought by the town. Is there a second on that? Any discussion? The lawyer said we needed to do this for some reason, to acknowledge, acknowledging that we accepted the money of the fines that we levied.
Yep. Exactly.
Get recorded, be done. Nope. Okay. It's a procedural thing that the lawyer said we needed to do.
I got it.
Okay, all right, any further discussion? All in favor? Yes, we have the money. All right, thank you. And then, I think, part of the, well, again, it will be part of the packet, we'll do a, like, the, the audit representation cover letter. Basically telling us, you know, the results of the annual audit.
And I signed it.
Yeah, but there were no red flags, right, or?
You always get red flags because of the size of your community and so on.
I did see the audit. That, that was sent over last... Yeah, yeah, this is kinda like the, like it's the summary letter.
It's, it's the last bit, and we should be getting to complete, printed, and...
Oh, so this is different than we got a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, and did, basically, from here, they will release the full audit, both for the website and hard copy for you folks.
Yeah, okay. All right, so the, and the item I added to the agenda is about some vacancies that we have, and one of them, I would, Joe was here. So I, we have two vacancies on the budget committee now, Lois resigned right after town meeting, and Lee Bolia Fisher resigned just this past week, notified Mitch and myself. So that puts us at seven, and the way the budget committee bylaws work is that if somebody, if somebody resigns after town meeting, then the Board of Selectmen appoints a replacement to serve until the next town meeting, where there'll be a special election or, or just a regular election, like Lois only had one year left in her term anyway, so that seat was coming around again anyway. I don't know how many years... I thought she just came back on too, but, but Jane Rice did.
That's true.
So, so anyway, so there's at least two budget committee spots that we need to appoint somebody for. I think there's at least one capital improvement committee seat we need to fill, because Joe was on that committee, and now that he's a select person, he's, he's agreed to stay on the committee as the select board representative, but we have a citizen position open on that. And there might be others, you know, maybe check with Jessica, I'm not sure that we have two alternates for planning board and two alternates for board of appeals. I thought, yeah, I thought we still had one there too, so, we should determine what we have open and put some communication out there, hey, if people are interested, th- these are open seats, if you're interested in potentially serving, you like, you know, however you wanna do it, you know, send us a letter of interest, like which, why you wanna do it, and why you think you would be, you know, why you wanna serve, and why, whatever.
Yeah, did you pick one out of the menu, or are you still waiting?
I know.
The only, the last person in the room.
I know, everybody else got out as soon as he started mentioning it.
Right, everybody...
Alan was like, I know where this is going.
They're already all on the committee list. So if we could, yeah, just move forward on that and get some communication out on that, and, cause we, we, especially with budget and CIP, CIP's probably the most timely one, cause they should really be starting in September to work on some of their stuff, and budget's not far behind that, so we wanna get some people appointed to fill those, fill those slots, so. All right, consent agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
All in favor? All right, upcoming meetings, when is our next meeting?
Thirteenth.
September thirteenth will be our next town meeting here, not town meeting, select board meeting here at the town office. I don't believe we need an executive session tonight, no?
That I'm aware of, sir.
All right. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second, Todd?
Uh, yeah, a second. That was halfway up to do.
All in favor? Todd already adjourned, all right, we are adjourned, thank you.